Two, one. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is the Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. It's nice to see a full house tonight. Before we begin, if any of you have cell phones, please take a quick look at them and make sure they're on silent mode. And when you're done with that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right, let's call this to order. Mr. Hatfield, please take a roll.
All right, President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Rousch is not here. Secretary Hatfield is present. Treasurer Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Frazee.
Here.
All set. All right, thank you, sir. Moving into our consent agenda, we have item two point one, approval of the minutes from April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two budget workshop and regular meeting. Item two point two lists the number of staff that have announced their resignations along with the effective dates. Item two point three is a staff member that is being recommended for hire.
Hey, Scott, and he is here tonight, so we typically introduce him to let them have a moment to thank you for hiring.
Well, let's have Mr. Doan stand up then and please introduce himself.
I've actually prepared a few comments, if that's okay.
Fantastic. Floor's yours.
I'm currently a high school principal, and you never give a high school principal a microphone moment because they will take it every time. But good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me a few moments to introduce myself. My name is Benjamin Doan, and I consider it an incredible honor to serve as one of your high school assistant principals for the upcoming school year. Prior to accepting this position, I served as the head principal at Ogama Heights High School in West Branch for the last six years. While it has been a fantastic and rewarding experience to lead the Ogama Heights School community, the opportunity to join the administrative team of the Midland Public Schools was an opportunity I simply could not pass up. To me, the Midland Public Schools represent the highest standard of excellence in the areas of academics, athletics, and fine arts. I have always admired the ability of the Midland Public Schools to stay on the cutting edge of innovation while also managing to maintain a commitment to time-honored traditions. It is clear that MPS is a great place to work and learn. In closing, I would like to thank everyone who has made me feel welcome thus far and look forward to meeting and collaborating with everyone very soon. Take care and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. We're excited to have you on the team. Following that is item two point four, approval of the school systems bills for the month of March two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of six million five hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. And finally, item two point five is requests for payment for legal fees. Milla Johnson Attorneys for one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents and the three law firm, five hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve items two point one through two point five.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, supported by Mr. Lotterbach. Any additional discussion regarding items two point one through two point five?
Item two point four in our purchase order listing, it's just a hair below the purchasing limit, and it's listed as open, so that means that it's an ongoing order, I believe. We have Master Electric two two zero six seven six for twenty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents, but it's not in our backup because it's below the limit. But it has not been approved in a previous meeting, so I didn't know if it's if it's open, that still means there's additional funds to go to that. So I wondered if we could get some backup on whatever that might be.
If you give us time, we'll take a look, but I I'd have a hard time believing it's open. It's gotta be an invoice for something, but we'll we'll check into it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any additional comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a presentation from our chief science officers. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. We look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. This is the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year chief science officers. In this program, we make sure, so it's a high school, middle school program throughout the world. We have places in Kuwait, Georgia, everywhere that you can think of for the most part. There is another region in Michigan, in Central Michigan University. So this is a STEM leadership-focused group. So we develop an action plan to spread STEM awareness to our communities through community outreach. And each year, we have a summer Leadership Training Institute where we learn different ways to connect to our family, or our community members, our friends, and our peers to spread STEM awareness. We also have a cabinet meeting. This year, our fall cabinet meeting was at MDOT where we were able to learn different things about what MDOT does. We had a spring cabinet meeting here in Midland at Dow Chemical, Dow DuPont. So we basically learned what they did. We got a plant tour. And then coming up Thursday, I think, of this week, we have our end-of-the-year celebration where we're going to celebrate all the achievements that everybody in this program has done. So all the way from Saginaw Schools, Banger, Midland, all the different schools in our district and in our community are going to come together at the end of the year to celebrate all of our accomplishments.
Hi, I'm Ryland, a chief science officer at Northeast Middle School. Katie and I led action plans in our club for our school. And so my action plan was doing demonstrations with the ESA students. And we kept on with the recycling action plan left by the former CSOs from last year.
My action plan was doing a water quality stewardship project at Quasi Lake. And this was both Northeast Middle Schools project and Jefferson Middle Schools Environmental Club. We shared our stewardship plans about water quality on May fourth, the Midland City Parks and Rec Board meeting, and May fifth, the Chippewa Nature Center Saginaw Bay Watershed Celebration.
Hi, my name is Preston Kamara, and I'm a seventh-grade chief science officer for Jefferson Middle School. What we did this year, we promoted STEM throughout Jefferson. One of the things that we did was we organized an after-school STEM club. So we just opened our final meeting today. We have met twenty-seven days out of the school year. We meet weekly. Some of the activities that we did were engineering field swell cars, engineered a candy tower and see if it would see if it would be able to withstand an earthquake. And we also did reverse engineering through taking apart a computer and through wind-up toys. We also learned how to deal with coding and how to and how to build an app sometimes. Also, my other colleague, who cannot make it tonight, she created STEM kits for elementary students at Seabert. We also organized a recycle art contest in honor of Earth Day. We wrapped that up last week. So basically, what students do is they make an art sculpture using recycled materials or materials that would normally end up in landfills. And we also have a STEM Communication Bulletin Board that is put outside our eighth-grade lab. And basically, what we use it for is to share STEM activities in school and within the community.
Good evening. I'm Mike Zerinsky, the faculty advisor for Midland High School. Our senior CSO Faith was unable to join us tonight due to some prior commitments. But this year, Faith focused her action plan on direct engagement with students on STEM topics and career fields. Faith fielded questions from many students and provided information. As follow-up to those questions, many times she'd include an article or articles for them to read regarding the information that they were seeking. Next year, we have commitments from two of our two of our four potential CSOs already at the high school level, and I'm trying to get two more of our seniors that participated in the program before.
Hello, everyone. I'm Eva Nelson. I'm a fifth-year CSO at Dow High. And over the past five years, my main action plan has been elementary flight nights. I've hosted four. Those were for Seabert, Adams, Central Park, and most recently Plymouth. I hosted Plymouth's Flight Night on April twenty-ninth. And at these events, it's an evening event for the third graders of each elementary school, and they come to Barstow Airport to learn from a bunch of different activities and demonstrations all about flight and aviation. There are also planes that they can go in and speak to the pilots of to learn more about the small aspects of STEM and different STEM careers. The year that COVID was super bad, I obviously could not host an in-person event, so I ended up making a CSO blog where I described the CSO program and my action plans from the previous years. And this was published in the Midland Daily News, and it actually started the monthly CSO article in the Midland Daily News. Also, I'm part of the Regional Leadership Council. I'm a Michigan representative for the CSO International Town Hall Meetings, and I'm the co-president for the CSO International Equity for Everyone Committee.
Good evening again. So my name is Mary McLaughlin. I am a fifth-year CSO at Dow High as well. So once COVID hit, we all realized the world was shutting down, and we couldn't do anything. So one of my main action plans was to create STEM kits for everybody, for all the elementary schoolers at home. I started off with the fourth grade at Seabert, and then this year, I grew it to other schools, other fourth graders. I focused on fourth grade because that's mostly when they can start having interest and be able to do activities. As well as Ava, I am part of the Regional STEM Leadership Council. I've also been published in the Midland Daily News in the STEM blogs. I have previously hosted Teen Science Cafe, and we just finished our Regional Teen Science Cafe where we invited all the CSOs from our cabinet to come to a fun CSO night where we focused on climate control. I also helped implement the bulletin board at Dow High School with all our STEM activities and our STEM news. And then most recently, I helped the Central Park Elementary students with their STEM-based exhibition project. We talked about and discovered different ideas about how astronauts can survive in space and what they need to what they need to develop to have that opportunity to go to space.
Hi, I'm Saiba. This is my fourth year in the program, and I'm from Dow High. My action plan in the last couple of years has been a math festival, and I've done it for Midland Public Schools District, the CSO program in SciTech Institute. And at these events, what we do is the students get to have fun with some interactive puzzles and engage in guest speakers. In addition to that, I'm part of the Regional and International Leadership Council and the president of the Math Rocks Committee.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sienna Madzek, and I'm a fourth-year CSO at Dow High. So when I first started as a CSO, I wanted to focus more on medical science because that is what I want to pursue as a career. But this year, I decided to focus more on environmental awareness and climate change because especially what's going on in this world, I think it's important for students to be aware of that. So this year, I was able to take a group of students to Chippewa Nature Center to have a presentation on climate change and environmental action. And so they were able to go through this amazing presentation on how climate change is not only affecting plants and animals, but it's how it's affecting us, too. And so they were able to look at certain displays and exhibits, and we were also able to go on a nature walk. Thank you.
We just want to say thank you so much for allowing us to present to you tonight. We presented our first year that the program was even existing. The only ones remaining are me and Mary, actually. But we're really excited to share all of our actions with you. This is a program that we care so much about, and we're really excited to share our passion with you. We're open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, wow. What an incredibly gifted and brilliant group of students. All very, very articulate speakers, and your ideas are amazing. I have just a couple of questions, and I'm sure my board members may have some as well. I didn't hear anything about how you get other students involved. How do you keep the group growing? And it could be anybody, whoever wants to step up. I know.
I can take that quick. So we typically are supposed to have elections to get new CSOs in our roles. However, that's mainly for the middle schools because high schools kind of just grab anyone from the middle schools. So that's why Dow High has four because Mary and I have kind of traveled through the middle school and high school, and then we collected Saiba and Sienna as they came through the middle school and high school. But they're typically supposed to have elections. Like, I know Jefferson, through their STEM club, has hosted elections, and they actually just got their new CSO that they decided on. So that was really exciting. But that's the typical way, but it's not really enforced too heavily. It's kind of just whoever wants to do it, and whoever's really passionate about STEM and really wants to change their community is stable.
Okay. Last one from me. Can you tell us a little bit about the collaborative process that any one of you may go through when you're brainstorming or creating your projects?
So when I talked about at the beginning, the Leadership Training Institute, so that's when all the whole cabinet comes together in the Great Lakes Bay region. And we have this session called Action Planning where all of us as a group come together, and we brainstorm our ideas to spread STEM awareness. So that could be anything from field trips to STEM clubs, bulletin boards, to teen science cafes. And then we also have a session during that time, so it's a two-day event. So during that session, we also have a networking session where we get to we get taught how to like talk to professionals. I actually was able to do that session this past summer, but we were able to learn how to talk to professionals, how to interact, how to write emails. And then our regional lead, Ms. Cole from SVSU, helps us get stay in connection, stay in connection with all the other CSOs throughout the region so we can figure out who's doing what, and we can collaborate and try to come up with something bigger and better.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions? Lynn?
I would just ask how you how you got interested in this. Was there something when you were younger, robotics, a science project? Is there something in particular that any of you can think of that sparked your interest in CSO?
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask something to the last one, but it's kind of related to this. So like Mary was mentioning, the LTIs, how we get like a bunch of different sessions to like do different things. I think that's one of the things that really sparked like my passion for that was because there was like, like she said, there was networking sessions, but there was also professionals, and you could like talk to them and just other people, just like being in that community of like like-minded people and also just like having fun with them. And then for me, definitely, I think I got into the program because Jefferson had like Science Olympiad, and I had like some friends who were older and my older sister, and they were in it. So I kind of knew it from there. But I know a lot of people, like, once again, with things that CSOs do or just other STEM activities, they kind of get that passion from that.
I also want to add that our CSO advisors are also a really important part of the community. When I was in middle school, Mrs. Brillhart came up to me, and she asked if I wanted to be a CSO my following year in eighth grade because my sister was a CSO, and she saw that, and she thought that that might also be a really interesting thing for me to do. And I never would have done CSO if it wasn't for her. So I just want to say thank you to all those people who helped.
I have one more. Was it Key that did Lake Kewasi? Did you have any findings, or did you have results from what you tested in the lake? That was the first part, and the second part is, did you share the results with anybody, the city or the county or anything like that?
So we found out that Quasi Lake is actually pretty nice since Dr. Pat Roz went to the lake, and like, there was Eurasian water milfoam, which is an invasive species, and he just he got rid of it. And we also talked to the Parks and Rec Board, and we also talked to Chippewa Nature Center's Watershed Celebration.
So you took action on what you found?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Pat, you may want to share what you do for a little.
Oh, I'm the director for drinking water waste treatment for Saginaw. So I like hearing what you're talking about.
And Scott, while we have them up there, can I do shining stars? Because three of them have to stay here.
Oh, of course.
So I'll just read it because the kids, you made three of your, or four of your sponsors, one not here tonight, shining star. So let me read a little bit about each of them. So our shining stars for this month are the four sponsors. Christine Brillhart earned her bachelor's degree from Michigan Tech and her master's degree from CMU during her tenure with MPS that began, excuse me, in nineteen ninety-four. Christine has taught science at Northeast and Jefferson Middle School and HH Dow High School. She is currently a science teacher at Jefferson Middle School. You made the rounds, Christine. John Lennon earned both her bachelor's and master's degree from Central Michigan University. She joined the MPS team in nineteen ninety-four as a science teacher at Jefferson and central intermediate schools, and spent seventeen years teaching science to central middle school cavaliers. Since two thousand and twelve, Jen has served as the middle school learning coach and middle school science teacher leader, working and supporting MPS middle school science teachers and programs. Tom McNamara is not here tonight, earned his bachelor's degree from CMU and his master's degree from Western Michigan University. He joined the MPS team in nineteen ninety-six as a physics teacher at HH Dow High School. Tom continues to teach physics to Dow High charters twenty-six years later, in addition to being a science teacher leader. Mike Zerinsky earned both his bachelor's and master's degrees from Saginaw Valley State University. You skipped the Chippewa part. I don't understand that. But before joining the MPS team in two thousand and seventeen, Mike taught science at Saginaw High for twenty years. Mike teaches science at Midland High School. This year's May shining stars are very special because these four individuals are chief science officer, program advisors in the MPS secondary schools, and were nominated for the Shining Star Awards by MPS students. Here are just a few of the comments that students shared their nominations. Mrs. Brillhart is an amazing teacher and advisor. She holds all the STEM clubs at Jefferson and does them all wonderfully. She's also the advisor for the chief science officer at Jefferson. She goes above and beyond as a science teacher, as a wonderful advisor for all the STEM clubs, and is an amazing chief science officer advisor. Ms. Lennon is an amazing person. She is an amazing chief science officer advisor. She's also the has the greatest personality. Mr. Mack has been the Dow High CSO advisor since the start of the program five years ago. He works hard to help CSOs stay on track with their action plans and other CSO responsibilities while allowing them to remain independent and become better problem solvers and leaders. Mr. Mack has a great sense of humor and is a very caring person, which makes him an amazing CSO advisor. Mr. Zerinsky is the advisor for the CS program at Midland High. Throughout the pandemic, he did his best to keep the program alive and help us CSOs to do as much as we could. Anytime I needed anything either related to the program or just school in general, he was there to help in any way he could. I think that his advocacy for students and his program proves that he's willing to go above and beyond. Over the past two years, he has been fairly very helpful and encouraging advisor. Congratulations. If the three of you come up, we give you a couple of awards and then let you shake the board members' hands, and students will let you sit down finally. All right, that will move us right into requests to address the board. We'll wait a minute here. Let our students clear out. Thanks again, everybody. Okay. First up, we have Asher Goldberg. Asher, are you with us? No, okay. How about Kyle Bacon? Hi, Kyle. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Can I start?
Of course.
Okay. Hello, my name is Kyle Bacon. My pronouns are he/him, and I'm a transgender student at Midland High School. After coming out, I was met with a with a reaction of disgust and misunderstanding from my peers. The majority of cisgender students do not know how to support or even talk to their transgender peers. They don't know how pronouns work or that asking invasive questions is insensitive. They give us weird looks or say that we are not backed by science or are delusional for believing we are born in different bodies. Transgender youth is the most likely population of students to attempt suicide. The mental health of transgender students gets damaged on a regular basis due to the harassment and dysphoria we face. I'd like to take time to talk about my experiences as a victim of a hate crime, one that was committed by a fellow student at Midland High. During my junior year, I received messages from someone in my class claiming that they were going to spread my former name around the school. The student then proceeded to call me slurs and tell me I was disgusting simply for doing what I needed to do to survive. I was used to ignorant people telling me these things. I was used to being able to defend my right to be a person in this society. What I was not used to was what they did next. They told me they were going to kill me. They sent me death threats because I am a trans person. No student should have to fear their peers or what they might do to them just for being themselves. We should not be scared to go to school or get called names. Students should not avoid drinking at school so they don't have to use the bathroom because they fear that they will be judged or hurt. I haven't participated in sports, and most transgender kids don't because they fear locker rooms or that they will be forced to participate on the team of their assigned gender at birth. This event and much of the other harassment trans kids face in Midland Public Schools could easily be avoided. With the education that everyone has pronouns and they are not exclusive to the trans experience, that we are normal people and not predators, trans students are safer. Teaching people that there is nothing inappropriate or vulgar about trans people's existence helps destigmatize us. Teaching vocabulary like dysphoria, deadname, non-binary, and cisgender helps all students have conversations of understanding and support. My existence should not be censored. My existence should not be threatened, and most of all, my existence should not be debated. School is a place to learn, and the harassment transgender kids face disrupts them from being able to achieve that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. Renita Bonides. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. This is my eighth consecutive month to speak and eleventh month of attending meetings. There are very few in this room, on this board, or in the administration that know anything about me, and I want to share a little bit about my background. I grew up in Grand Blank, Michigan. It was basically an all-white district when I got there in seventh grade back in nineteen seventy-three. That was when Bill became the first black student in the district. He was in my math class, and the two of us worked together as we were in the more advanced section. He was a person, someone I viewed as an equal, not as a color. I treated him like any other student around me in school. By the time I graduated, there were many more blacks in the district, but still a very small percentage. I moved on after graduation to Indiana, Ohio, Nashville, Tennessee, before moving back to Grand Blank Flint area. Two thousand and five, my family and high school children attended an all-black church in downtown Flint. We were the only white family in the church for nine months. During that time, I made friends with many wonderful men and women. I would meet with them, and we learned about each other. I heard stories of their past in the deep south in Mississippi. There was no attempt to blame the other because of our histories. Rather, we developed a deep compassion and love for one another. This church then merged with a predominantly white church. Without those walls being broken down in a time of learning about each other, that would not have likely happened so smoothly. And I also worked at the Flint Farmers Market for six years with a very diverse cultural setting and interacting with thousands of people a year. When I moved to Midland ten years ago, I found this to be a very homogeneous community. It felt so strange to not see the diversity I had always had around me. There has been some change in the past ten years, but not very diverse from my perspective. I say all this to let you know that many advances can be made in helping the children learn and grow without these forces, force programs and agenda. Why is it necessary for a student to have a teacher of their color to know they can succeed? Is it not possible to have speakers of their color from the community come in to speak to the ability to be successful in a wide variety of careers? Can they not learn through books, movies, field trips, and other activities? There is obviously a shortage of qualified teachers in all ethnicities, but especially minorities. As was mentioned at the last month, are we forced to take someone solely on the color of their skin and not their qualifications? I hope this helps you understand why I do not like the agendas to divide the parents, teachers, and community while the children are the ones paying the price along the way. We want to help children learn to become achievers, not victims of society or their past. Let's do our part in the schools to help them succeed. We can do much better and should. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma Brown. Is Emma signed with us tonight? Okay. Quinn McMath. Quinn? Are you Remus?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you got to speak together?
Yes.
Okay. You only get three minutes combined. Okay, you guys good at that?
Yep.
All right. Gentlemen, the floor's yours.
Hello, my name is Quinn McMath. My pronouns are he/they.
And my name is Remus Thurston. My pronouns are he/him. We are two members of the MHS Student Leadership DEI Group. Today, we are affecting crucial decisions in a negative way. There is a small group of very vocal parents and adults who don't even have children in the school system that are loudly expressing that they represent the students they talk about, but they do not represent a majority of students in our schools.
This is dangerous because the wishes and needs of the students, which really should be the constituents, not their parents, are not being met or even considered at some points. Our presentation would have created and helped bolster safety for trans students but was denied due to a projected minority of angry parents backlash, which is not how decisions should be made in this district.
Proclamation. Finally, earlier this year, you sent out a DEI proclamation to schools and students, but have not upheld the standards written in the document. On the digital sign outside Midland High, a slide displays the quote, "Diversity and inclusion, which are the real grounds for creativity, must..." Oh, my goodness, my apologies. "...must remain at the center of what we do." This quote was by Marco Bizzari. These are empty words if we don't bring them to fruition. Part of your proclamation promises to educate about DEI topics, but it is being pushed against at every turn. We will finish with a question. Why is gender identity opt-in when it is important to the success and comfort of many students?
Thank you. Joe Bonides. Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Hello. I have two areas to cover tonight. First, in the November 2021 meeting, the board was startled that the public was aghast that 14 bylaw changes were calmly voted in with the public not having any way to view them previously, and you were still confused when this issue was raised during the public comments at subsequent meetings. Well, based on Mr. Sharo's comments at the April meeting, you appear to be ready to throw the Neola package overboard in favor of a new package. The selling points Mr. Sharo mentioned were simpler and that this group would defend the board in court. So, I have three questions. Will there be an opportunity for the public to see this new package at any time before it is implemented, or is this going to be just a review by Mr. Sharo, rubber stamped by a subcommittee, and then this board? Two, is this new package at all aligned with more effectively teaching the students, or is this strictly a defensive structure the board would be implementing so they can limit their liabilities? And three, does this new package impact the interactions with the parents in any way to improve the lack of transparency, or is this going to add a thicker layer between the parents' desires and school actions? While this whole thing may not matter that much, as you don't actually have to follow your bylaws, it will make your lawyer's job easier later should the parents get out of hand. In any case, please implement these changes as quickly as possible so those parents who are trying to decide to pull their kids next year can make that decision. Second topic. At the March Board meeting, Mr. Bruton gave a lengthy presentation on how he was working on the multitude of federal funds to enable all sorts of things to happen in the district. In the course of that description, he appeared to describe hiring 30 more professionals in various non-teaching roles. When asked by Mr. Blazy about sustaining this, he said things like, quote, "Hope the governor's budget passes." He was hopeful. "We need good thoughts, and we will have plans B, C, and D." At the Budget Review Meeting in April, one month later, during public comment, I asked how we were going to sustain these spending areas when the grants stopped. Mr. Bruton then gave a forward-looking view of what was coming the next year, and that he said that the ESER funds were being used for one-time projects. Mr. Sharo at that session said that the teacher attrition would allow for transitioning of these new positions if grant dollars go away. So if we are going to be okay with the grants ending and after we have added staff in these non-teaching roles, what are we not going to teach anymore to stay on budget because the people we add are not going to be able to teach math, science, and early education? These two meetings were telling very different stories regarding our dependence on the government. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Clapper. Hi, Hannah. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Hi. My name is Hannah Clapper. I use the pronouns she/her, and I'm a senior at Midland High School. I am also part of the Student Leadership DEI Committee, and over the past five months, we have been working on educating the student body on pronouns and how to be a good ally. First, I would like to address what pronouns are. Everyone has pronouns. They are used to gender people in our society. Some examples are she/her, he/him, and they/them. If you're ever in doubt with someone's pronouns, just ask. Pronouns are not a scary topic. They should be normalized, which is part of the reason why Student Leadership DEI Committee wants to educate people on this topic. There is also a lot of confusion around the topic of gender identity and gender expression. Gender expression is the outward appearance of a person, so some examples would be clothing, hairstyles, mannerisms, and how a person acts. And then gender identity is an individual's personal sense of a particular gender. It is important to know that gender identity and gender expression are two different things, and they fall on two different spectrums. There is a lack of education around these topics, which can spread ignorance. A huge reason why pronouns and gender identity should be taught and talked about is to stop the spread of ignorance and to have people gain an understanding of this topic. Providing this education can help students in the LGBTQ community because it implements a level of understanding and empathy, which MPS promotes. There are transgender students and non-binary students at Midland High School, and I believe those students deserve to be represented and protected. There is a statistic that transgender and non-binary youth, who have reported having their pronouns respected, attempted suicide at half the rate of those who have not had their pronouns respected. And 42% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, including more than half of transgender and non-binary youth. It is important to understand that the mental health issues faced by the LGBTQ community are not because they're in the community, but because of the treatment they receive from society and the peers around them. Providing this education can improve the mental health of LGBTQ students. Like I said earlier, my Student Leadership DEI Committee planned on presenting about pronouns and gender identity to the student body, but we were unfortunately told that it must be an opt-in presentation. What this means is that parents need to sign a form allowing their child to attend this presentation. Evidently, the students that need to hear it will not attend. This presentation should not have been opt-in. This topic needs to be taught in order to foster a good and safe environment in the school. There is a large number of LGBTQ students in the schools that deserve to feel safe, respected, and represented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thomas Metcalf. Good evening, Thomas.
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us. What was yours?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Thomas Metcalf, and I'm a senior from Midland High School. My pronouns are he/him, and I'm here to talk about LGBT issues as well. In October of last year, community members came to this board about a survey from the Legacy Center, which contained questions pertaining to gender identity. The complaints resulted in the Legacy Center removing those questions from their survey, and I'm here to request that the board reaffirm their commitment to the safety and development of LGBTQ students by asking the Legacy Center to reinstate these questions. Already, you've heard quite a bit about suicide statistics and mental health issues from my colleagues, and I'd like to bring that down to earth, to Midland level, because I want to reaffirm that these are issues that happen here. Just personally, I know two students who have been hospitalized for mental health-related issues at Midland Public Schools, and I know four students who have had dangerous suicidal emergencies, and all of those students have been LGBTQ students. LGBTQ students are one of Midland's most vulnerable populations when it comes to mental health, and yet when an organization such as the Legacy Center attempts to make Midland a safer place, there is pushback from community members. This pushback is not rooted in fact, it's rooted in viewpoints that the very acknowledgement of LGBTQ people somehow invalidates the identity or beliefs of other students. This isolates LGBTQ students from the rest of the student body, and it's dangerous. Clearly, this dangerous belief does hold the great power of our community. Something as simple as a checkbox on a survey issued to students is considered too extreme. It was asking, are you male, female, transgender, or non-binary? And that was taken away from the survey. Whether all community members like it or not, we do exist, and the school board must place the protection and development of students over irrational fears. To end on a more positive note, the strongest correlation which leads to a lower suicide rate in LGBTQ teens is acceptance. The most important aspect of this is the relationship between parent and child, but the community plays an important role as well. And we can start by giving students opportunities to share their gender identities when being surveyed about things like mental health, drug use, and development, things they're particularly vulnerable in and things that the Legacy Center specializes in. I implore the board to communicate with the Legacy Center and allow for channels to help LGBTQ students. Please do not let the views of an ignorant view curb protections for vulnerable students. Thank you.
Last on the list that I have in front of me is Peggy Hoff. Good evening, Peggy. Thank you for joining us.
First, I'm Peggy Hoff. I would like to commend the students and the, I guess, the chief scientists left, but I want to commend the students in this district. I have two children that graduated from Midland Public Schools and have gone on to be exemplary citizens, and hopefully everyone here will. I also have four grandchildren in this school district, and I am basically a sociologist by nature, so I like to study and I like to research. I was pretty dismayed back, I think it was March. I have in front of me some information from the Center for Educational Performance and Information about Michigan's school data compared to Midland Public Schools' data. Somewhere, I think, I saw a sign that said something about us being in the top 6% of Michigan's state schools. I'm pretty disgusted that somebody could manipulate statistics to show that. I know we have a wonderful school system. I'm not denying that. What I am wanting to bring forth is information on English, math, and science that is pitiful. For example, I just pulled this one out. Third grade. In Michigan State, there's 42.8% proficiency. That's horrible. In our district, there's 55.9%. That's not much better. If any of you are teachers, you all know the grading system and the point average. These are failures. These are not good. We have exemplary students here. Those are the ones that are beyond proficiency. But I'm talking about the basic proficiency of what we're supposed to be teaching in these schools, that we are not. We're not necessarily leaving out kids who are going to strive for excellence no matter what. They have a basic parental structure, or family structure, or community structure that feeds into that. I'm talking about kids who can't read and can't write. I have science numbers here. I suggest that you all look at the website, and I'm just pulling up third grade. All students, 42% in Michigan, and 57%... What happened to the other four out of 10 kids? Where are they? They can't do third-grade math in third grade. I have seventh grade. These tests are recent. There was no statistics done for 2019 through 20, so you'll have to do the comparison.
Thank you. Okay. I know we had some people walk in after the list was given to me. You guys know where I'm going? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name when you get to the podium.
Hi. Hi. My name's Angie Kelleher. I use she/her pronouns. Y'all have seen me before. I have... I'm so damn proud of these students that just got up and talked to the trans folks and the queer folks, and the stuff that they're doing in the high school is amazing, and I just want to reaffirm that trans folks have been around for a long time, non-binary folks have been around for a long time. You might not remember it from when you were in high school, or in middle school, or in elementary, but they have been there. They just weren't able to be so vocal. When I was a school social work intern over 20 years ago, I worked with a four-year-old who was a signed male, but this child knew they were a girl. They knew. And their life was so stressful because of it that they pulled out their hair every day. And I have lost trans folks to suicide, and I count trans folks in my circle that I love. And I am so encouraged to see these trans students talking, and they're just so incredibly brave, more brave than I could ever be, and it tells me that we're doing something right, that they feel that they can come up and say this, but that we still have a long way to go. And so I've said to you before, like, thank you for all that you're doing to support them, and I hope that we keep doing more to make them feel safe and included in our schools.
Thank you. Daughter, sign another hand. Go on, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Matt Buchek. So, I think we can all see this coming, is that sooner or later, the school system's going to be rocked. There's a good chance that the federal Department of Education could be ended. There's a good chance that the voucher program could be coming to Michigan shortly. Politically, things could change on a dime. I'm just wondering what the school system's going to do about that. We spend upwards of $10.5 million a month, which is an incredible amount of money. So I want to talk a little bit about that. We all pay taxes to go to the school, but everybody that I've talked to who has the means to leave is leaving. I'm sorry. My kids are still here as of now. So there's something funny that we spent money on. We spent like $82,000. This is just one example. January 10th meeting on a 2013 telehandler, which is equipment for the trade school. We had nobody licensed at the time, and students could never be licensed to use it. Did we get that equipment? Are we using it? It's interesting that we bought a cat, which happens to be the most expensive piece of equipment you can get for that type of equipment. It's got a closed-in cab, when you can buy a SkyTrak for a quarter as much. We've also had a FOIA request, where we requested a lot of information about middle school students, and I appreciate the high school students here, but being poached into a sexualized club in middle school. It is my view that this is too young. Parents are still trying to teach the kids their values. That's really the big point here. I respect everybody that came up here, thought they gave great speeches, and as individuals, I think they're going to do great. But when you get out in the real world... When I was a school social work intern over 20 years ago, I worked with a four-year-old who was assigned male, but this child knew they were a girl. They knew. And their life was so stressful because of it that they pulled out their hair every day. And I have lost trans folks to suicide, and I count trans folks in my circle that I love. And I am so encouraged to see these trans students talking, and they're just so incredibly brave, more brave than I could ever be. And it tells me that we're doing something right, that they, that they feel that they can come up and say this, but that we still have a long way to go. And so, I've said to you before, like, thank you for all that you're doing to support them, and I hope that we keep doing more to make them feel safe and included in our schools.
Thank you. Daughter, sign another hand. Go on, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Matt Buchek. So, I think we can all see this coming, is that sooner or later, the school system's gonna be rocked. There's a good chance that the, the federal Department of Education could be ended. There's a good chance that the voucher program could be coming to Michigan shortly. Politically, things could change on a dime. I'm just wondering what the school system's gonna do about that. We spend upwards of $10.5 million a month, which is an incredible amount of money. So I want to talk a little bit about that. We all pay taxes to go to the school, but everybody that I've talked to who has the means to leave is leaving. I'm sorry. My kids are still here as of now. So there's something funny that we spent muddy on. We spent like $82,000, this is just one example, January 10th meeting on a 2013 telehandler, which is equipment for the trade school. We had nobody licensed at the time, and students could never be licensed to use it. Did we get that equipment? Are we using it? It's interesting that we bought a cat, which happens to be the most expensive piece of equipment you can get for that type of equipment. It's got a closed-in cab, when you can buy a SkyTrak for a quarter as much. We've also had a FOIA request, where we requested a lot of information about middle school students, and I appreciate the high school students here, but being poached into a sexualized club in middle school. It is my view that this is too young. Parents are still trying to teach the students, teach the kids their values. That's really the big point here. I respect everybody that came up here, thought they gave great speeches, and as individuals, I think they're gonna do great. But when you get out in the real world, nobody cares what you identify as. They care about how well you do, how well you perform. How good are your academics in school? So I just want to make sure that that's the focus. This whole bringing, like, the mental side of things into school, into everyday school, it may have its special place, but it kind of bothers me that that becomes priority one. If this was always the situation for years, for forever, why do we need it now? Why is the focus now? And with that, that's all I have. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Gillian Smith, I'm an eighth grader at Jefferson. It's just a short, literal request. I've heard a lot of numbers thrown around this evening, like, you know, how much money the district is spending every month, every year, and I'm, the Jefferson Middle School track is in really bad shape, and I, I've had quite a few friends fall and have injuries on it this year, and I don't know, I just think it's in need of improving.
My name is Robin Biloxum, and I am a high schooler at Midland High School. I am here to talk about how it feels that there has been much done to affirm and protect LGBTQ youth in Midland Public Schools. Up until recently, there were no posters in Midland High School, you know, even bringing awareness to these different types of students that everybody may be encountering. We've had a GSA club, which stands for Gender Sexuality Alliance, which was initially established to help students feel that they had a sense of belonging while at Midland Public Schools. However, that club has not received any recognition, or not even talked about on the announcements at school. Posters that are put up around the school saying where the club meets and when they meet are often taken down or vandalized by other students that believe that it isn't appropriate at the high school level. On top of that, we also recently had put up posters for explaining about pronouns and why they are important, and why you should respect transgender individuals. Those posters, like the GSA posters, were vandalized and taken down, flushed down toilets, or even shredded up into pieces. So there is no action taken when this happens, and I understand that we aren't going to be able to catch every single student that decides to take down a poster. But however, if a different club's poster, say, a movie club, if their poster was vandalized or taken down or ripped up, I feel that people would notice that. They would say, that's not right, that's not fair to that club. However, there is nothing done whenever our posters are being vandalized, when we're just simply trying to make our statement that we exist and that we are here and we deserve to be respected. Thank you.
Thank you. And I saw one more handed back, sir.
I'm good, thank you.
You're good, okay. Last call. All right, we're moving on, public comment is closed. All right, next up, we have Section 5.1 under CIA. We, just make sure we don't have any minutes.
We don't.
Okay. Penny.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. We don't have minutes, we were not able to meet last month, but had a great meeting today, and you'll hear all about it next month in those minutes. 5.1 is for action. At the last meeting, I brought to you for consideration 18 different staff and curriculum development proposals. Those are listed in the agenda. They range from secondary English to exploration for middle school programming and curriculum to keyboarding. There's quite a variety of important work for us to do. The total for those is $342,556, and of course, if you act on these tonight with your approval, they'll be pending final budget approval.
Thank you, Penny. Okay, I'll accept the motion regarding item 5.1.
I move adoption of Action Item 5.1.
Has support.
Agenda item, sorry, Agenda Item 5.1.
Has support. Motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion regarding item 5.1?
I had a question. I know it's considerably more than our typical ask for the staff development. Is there a good chance that we will see a majority or all of this, 342,000, be achieved?
You know, in the perfect world, we would love for that. However, over historical perspective, we typically do have a variance. Several of these proposals are staff time, paid time for them to come together after school and engage in learning and engage in planning, and so, it really depends on our ability to get those groups of teachers together and be able to fit all of that into a year. It is no doubt that this is an ambitious year for us, and that we're asking folks to do quite a bit. So to directly answer your question, I don't anticipate that we'll hit that exact mark, but just want to know that we have the funds earmarked and your approval for these proposals in spirit to be able to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have information only. Penny, do you want to take 5.2?
I do. These are all mine tonight. So for information, we have a textbook for your consideration. This will, as other resources go, will be available for a 28-day review period, and anyone interested in reviewing that can contact me, and we'll schedule a time for them to take a look at it. The book is a math book. It is, the title is Algebra One with Calc Chat and Calc View by Ron Larson. It's part of the Big Ideas Learning Series, a series that we have across the district and other math courses, and this is algebra content, so it will be used in our algebra courses as well as our integrated series of courses where algebra is taught.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That'll move us right into our next action item, item 5.3.
Sure thing. This textbook was brought to you at the last meeting for information. We're asking for your approval of an IB Psychology textbook. The title is Second Edition Psychology Course Companion. The publisher is Oxford, and this will be used in both of our high schools in our psychology course.
All right, thank you. I will accept the motion for item 5.3. Will move. Support. Motion by Mr. Frazee, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any additional discussion for item 5.3? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Penny, 5.4.
Sure thing, we'll keep rolling. So we have for you tonight two contracts that we're seeking action on. These are related to our ESAR funding proposal that was shared with you previously. If you'll remember, there was a portion that was designated for after-school programming. We had quite a robust process through a request for proposal, and a team led by Allison Sisinelli came together to review those proposals, and the two that really came to the forefront as meeting our needs is first with Sullivan Learning Center, and this proposal would support students in grades K through 8 with a primary focus on reading. And for the first year of that contract, it would be $83,200 with an option to renew for year two. The second proposal, or excuse me, the second contract is with the Institute for Excellence in Education. This would focus on grades 9 through 12, a particular focus on math and SAT prep. One year of that contract is $49,250 with, again, an option to renew both of those.
Trade with somebody.
Thanks, Brian. Both of those would have an option to renew into year two pending the quality of the program and that they meet our outcomes. I want to remind the board that the students who are eligible to participate in these after-school programs are designated by ESAR. There are students who qualify as being part of a group of students. They would need to be either economically disadvantaged, they would be a student with a designated disability, students of color, English learners, students experiencing homelessness, students who have migratory status, or students who are in foster care. So it's a fairly narrow group of students that will be serving with these programs.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion regarding item 5.4.
Move adoption of Item 5.4.
I support. Motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional discussion?
I have a comment, I have to abstain, I have a family member who is a director at Sullivan.
Thank you, ma'am. Brad?
The only other point was that I learned about this earlier today, that these programs will be in the schools themselves. So Sullivan has a footprint, but it will not be at Sullivan, it will be in the schools themselves, in the elementaries, middle, and high school.
That's a great point, thank you. One of the points that the team really worked toward was making this as accessible as possible, so eliminating that idea of transportation to an offsite was important. Thanks for that.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have one abstaining. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. That will bring us into Item 6, Finance, Facilities, and Operations. Starting soft, we have minutes with Mr. Lauterbach.
Thank you. FFO committee met on May 2nd of 2022. The first item discussed was March financials. The March financials were reviewed. Revenue variances were tied to the variable receipt of winter taxes from year to year. Purchase card and purchase orders above the bid threshold were discussed. The, on the ESA budget, the administration will recommend adoption of the resolution expressing support of the Midland County Educational Services Agency budget at the May Board of Education meeting. Committee was updated on the contract extension discussions with the MCEA, and a conflict, scheduling conflict with the original June FFO meeting date was discussed, and that date is still pending. We're trying to find a meeting date that we can all get together for the June meeting. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have an action item 6.2. This is the MCEA 2022-23 budget. This is Mike O'Brien.
I'm gonna go to Brian, he attended the meeting, he gave me update, but I will add that this is mostly for support. The ESA controls its own budget, adopts its own budget, but they ask each, by law, each local district to either support or not support.
Okay. Brad?
Okay, thank you. Included in your packet was a very lengthy document that included a line-by-line detail of the ESA budget. As Superintendent Sherrill pointed out, we did review this with the MCESA and went through this entire budget line by line. A very high-level overview is it is based on an assumption that property values will increase 3%. Their budget is really split into two areas, into their general fund and their special education fund. In their special education fund, they're recommending salary increases of 3%, and you'll see when it all balances out that it is projected to have a minor deficit of about $98,000 and keeps with their general fund balance of about 12%, which is around their historic trend. The special education fund was built with an assumption 3% salary increases as well. It did assume that there will be a $400 foundation increase per student and that their enrollment would be stable. There is a bigger variance in the special education side of their budget, and if you looked in the overview, that is largely due to the addition of four support classrooms being added by the ESA, three, four students with autism spectrum disorder, and an additional post-secondary classroom. The deficit is a little bit larger in that fund than has been trend, a little bit over a half of a million dollars, but still does leave them with a fund balance of approximately 16.2%. Those four rooms are not for certain going to happen, so there is a higher degree of variability if they don't need to realize actually implementing all four of those classrooms. If all four don't come to fruition, then the deficit is likely to be lower. It is our recommendation that we do adopt a resolution of support through our thorough review of this budget.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I will accept the motion for Item 6.2.
I move adoption of Item 6.2, and that the board pass the resolution in the form that was included in the board packet.
I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Lauterbach, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any additional comments, questions regarding Item 6.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, action item, Brian, 6.3.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we have one gift recommended for your approval this evening. This gift comes from the Midland Area Community Foundation. Do note that this is funded by many individual private donors. It rolls through something called the SPIFI or Sports Facility Fund, but is designated for the HH Dow Turf Project, and this gift requiring action is for $10,674.71.
Okay, thank you.
I will move that we accept the gift totaling $10,674.71 from the Midland Area Community Foundation.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Ms. Baker. Any additional comments, questions regarding Item 6.3? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. And Brian, continuing with 6.4.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Tonight, we are recognizing for information only 40 gifts totaling $20,709.68, and these gifts support a wide variety of organizations within MPS, including various athletic teams, donations to support staff appreciation events, field trips, and a very large number of gifts to assist in the cost of the BPA's trip to nationals. All donors will, of course, be honored in the credits on our broadcast and through board correspondence, and we certainly, as always, appreciate our community's generosity.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving through the agenda, we are at 7.1. We're Human Resources Study Committee minutes, and for those, we have Mr. Hatfield.
All right, the April 14th HR minutes. Chair Phil Roush, myself, John Hatfield, Mike Sherrill, Brian Bruton, and Kyle Kowalski. There were no guests present. In order, number one, we reviewed the 2022-23 Employee Group Compensation Proposals. Number two, staffing update, progress for ESAR-funded positions and instructional staff for the next school year, and finally, discuss the aspiring leaders for administration hosted by MPS at MPS on May 10th. That's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Jaster with Item 7.2.
Thank you. First, the following staff member has announced her retirement. Ms. Victoria Finney, Midland Public Schools manager of transportation, is retiring effective June 30th, 2022, and I can continue to 7-3.
Yes, please, thank you.
And the board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Ms. Carolyn Mitchell. She passed away April 20th, 2022. Carolyn was a teacher for Midland Public Schools, working in no fewer than five buildings during her 30 years of service as an elementary teacher.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Next up, we have correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Item 8.1 is information only, that's letters to and from the Board of Education to the persons and entities listed in the agenda. Item 8.2, again, is information only. That is letters to the Board of Education from, and there is one individual identified, Donald G. DeBert.
And I had a question about that one. That was the FOIA request. What was the district's response to this request? Because it seems like a lot of the items that were requested were pretty personal, and they were related to students, and in light of what we heard tonight from Midland High students around LGBTQ, just want to know what the answers were and what you provided back to Mr. DeBert.
Yeah, so there's two pieces there. One is the actual rules of FOIA, and the second one is FERPA. And so, students, privacy is protected under all, under FERPA, so none of that would have been turned over. And then we produce what records we have, and so, when some of those requests are of how many students attended something, there's not records of those type of things, and so, most of that FOIA request, there was nothing to provide.
And we wouldn't keep records as to how many kids identify as?
No.
X or Y?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not anywhere in our data collection on students.
Okay, good. And, I mean, it seems like these requests and, you know, just kind of take the administration's efforts away from providing what they're supposed to be providing, which is educating and keeping our kids safe. So just want it noted that, you know, while the FOIA is important, and it's important that we respond to it, we need to make sure that our administrators are doing what they're asked to do on a daily basis, which is to educate our students. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Next up is Item 9 in the agenda, it's Scheduled Activities. And you'll find there, under 9.1, the remaining Board of Education scheduled meetings through December 19, 2022, and that will take us to Item 10. Are there any points of clarification, further discussion topics tonight before we turn the floor over to Mike for final comments? Okay, I'm sorry, Brad.
Is there an expression of sympathy that would be in our next meeting that would be for Mr. Rosen, the crossing guard?
Yeah, so that's a fine one. So I will have to look at that, Brad, because they're technically, I don't know if we have done crossing guards because they're actually an employee of the city, the police department. But thank you, we can take a look at that. And that might be why we don't have it.
Got it.
Okay.
Which we very much appreciate the city having those crossing guards out there.
Absolutely. And, and Mr. Rosen, he'll be greatly missed.
Yes, agree.
Great. Okay, Mike, I think the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm very pleased to say that we've reached a ton of agreement with our Midland City Education Association, our Teachers Collective bargaining group. Those details will follow because they still have to work through their ratification process. And we would expect that they may be done by June sixth board meeting, and then we would update you and ask that you as well, build on that agreement. The agreement extends our contract two additional years. And so we'll have contracts through, I think, around twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that, and I think we've reached a very fair agreement between both sides financially, as well as some lingering issues that we've been working on for a while, predominantly around elementary collaboration time for our teachers. So we're pretty pleased with that. And then read by grade three, so it's that time of year. Our data is back, and we're pleased, but still I wish we didn't have eight. But we have eight students out of five hundred and thirty third graders that we need to be looked at retention. So that's one of the lowest numbers I've seen, one percent of the students. And so we've done very well through those pandemic years to get those kids there. So I congratulate our teachers and our building principals and our reading literacy coaches to have reached that milestone there. And we'll continue to remediate those kids, some of the after-school programming, some of the summer school program, all those pieces we put together. And multiple of those eight students have only been, are very new to MPS. And so they have been, have not been through the MPS system very long. So we'll work on that and bring them up to speed as quick as possible. But the season's here. Brian's wearing some double-duty hats right now. As you know, we've lost our HR director. And that interesting, Mr. Hatfield, what you brought up, part of that was the workload and number of FOIA requests. And so that's an interesting comment you had tonight. But the school aid budget is here upon us, and so we have to adopt our budget by June thirty each year. We hope the legislators, and they have in many years, but not recently, given us a true budget by that date and time. I hear rumors that they've kind of set themselves an unofficial date to do that, to have us one soon. So we have three budgets out there. The working on that's going. Been some twists and changes that we've already heard coming out of it. But any way we look at it, it'll be a good budget for schools, I believe. We might have some wishes and wants in different areas than where they actually put the funds, but appears to be a very good budget coming forward for public schools in the state of Michigan to do so. And Brian and I have been analyzing student enrollment. We're very stable in our student enrollment. Despite many of the comments that were said tonight, our enrollment continues not to decline. And so we've done very well on enrollment, which is part of the financial package. As you know, you're paid per student from the state of Michigan as you go forward on that. The East Lawn property, we've been working on that for quite a while. We are in the contract stage where the two attorneys are going back and forth. Today, I seen the most recent version, and I think we're, we'll hear from our attorney. It's back in his hand, I think, but we're, I think we're there. And so we would expect to bring you a June, in our June packet, to request approval of the contract that would move that property back to the, to the public sector to be used for housing that's needed in our community. And ESA, we mentioned earlier, their budget. And you may or may not be aware, on the August ballot, the ESA is not MPS, and people mix that up. And so they're two, we're two totally different organizations. And the ESA is going out for a millage to improve their facilities. And so I would tell you that we should support that. We're not going to go outside. It's not ours. We should support that. Both the Suggnet School and Longview Buildings need some upgrades drastically. And they may be students that need to be serviced through the ESA, but they're still, in my mind, MPS students in the Leland Hard Community. And so we should support that if we can do so. But the information should be coming from the ESA, the details of that, that's not really ours to have. So please follow that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, end of the night. At this time, I will accept the motion to adjourn. So moved. Motion by Mr. Lauterbach. Support. I'm sorry, oh, support by Mr. Frazee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.